We have the call to order. We have the call to order invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith. Pleasure of allegiance by Councilmember Dunn Williams, please stand.
Bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for everything that you do for us. God, thank you for the many blessings that you bestow on us and bestow on the city of Bojor City. Lord, be with us today as we do the work of the city of Bojor and protect us as we drive home. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please face the flag, repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All present.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to, we didn't get a chance to congratulate you for being this year's president. And God, he runs a strict meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana open meetings laws and the adopted Bojor City Council meeting rules resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
I'd like a motion to approve minutes of June 21st, 2022, regular council meeting and dismissed with reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any comments from the citizens? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
And the chair, we entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion when we approve today's agenda.
We have second.
Sorry?
We have one agenda change. Anyone would like to motion to amend the agenda?
I'll make that motion to remove item.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Under new business.
Under new business.
Second.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve as amended.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Montgomery, second by Mr. Smith. Any comments? Counsel, any comments? Please cast your vote. Now, I'd like a motion to approve as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Montgomery, second by Mrs. Free. Mr. Free? Any comments of the public? Counsel, please pass your vote. The ceremony matters in recognitions of guests. I do recognize my sister Sam. She's my guest, I suppose, and my sister, my baby sister. And welcome you all. We do have another person we would like to recognize as well, if you would bear with us. Counsel, we want to recognize Mr. Williams today. And just read a little statement here. Mr. Williams, would you like to come down? All right. So, Don Bubble Williams served the citizen of District Three and was selected as president of the Bojor City Council from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. What made his role as council president so unique was because 2021 was the first time the citizen elected a new mayor in the past 16 years, which essentially made the role of an experienced council president more crucial than in the past years. From the first days of the disadministration, Mr. Williams was instrumental in ensuring and assisting in the smooth transition of power and mayor-council relations. Also, in the midst of working closely with a novice mayor and administration, Mr. Williams fiercely, fearfully faced his own personal adversity, excuse me, in the form of an egregious recall campaign. Fortunately, the recall effort fizzled out like an untamely water main break on Elan Drive. For the leadership and unwavering service of Mr. Williams, we are both thankful and proud. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
All right, we have a beautiful, oh. It looks like David Jones put you on there. He just walked in. It does look like David, doesn't it? But anyway, I know y'all can't see it, but it's a beautiful plaque. It's almost like 3D, really unusual, unusual. What's really unusual is the name. It says, "The Honorable Don Bubble Williams, Outstanding Leadership as President of the Bojor City Council, July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022." So, I didn't know if you knew what that new nickname is instead of, I mean, I didn't know if that was part of the recall effort or what, but anyway.
There's a lot worse than that.
But anyway, we're gonna have the plaque redone. I think it's a typo here, but let's leave it on there. We'll leave it on there for the record then. But anyway, congratulations. It's been an honor to serve with you the past 21 years and certainly your last presidency is a true testament of your intestinal fortitude and character. We love you, brother.
Thank you for your patience. We are at the point of public hearing, reapportionment, and we will open the public hearing.
Public hearing for public input on reapportionment map two for the Bojor City Council districts. Anyone from the public wishes to address on this issue?
So if there's no one that wished to address the council, address this item, we may just get Mr. Joyner to give us just a brief overlay quickly and then we will ask councilmembers for their input at that point.
I believe Mr. Joyner has the questions from the last meeting and he's gonna answer those questions on the record and then a letter will be brought forward later.
Okay.
Hello again. At the last meeting, we had questions by the Bojor.
For the record, state your full name, address, and your affiliation.
Gary Diller-Joyner. I reside at 429 Dunn Moreland Circle in Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I am the consultant for the city of Bojor on redistricting. At the last meeting, the Bojor NAACP provided each of you with a letter or a list of questions and you're going to have written responses that I will give to the clerk, but I wanna go through these and explain what they are. I'm just gonna do a verbal narrative on it. The first was, under the new proposed plan, three of the five districts would decrease minority black population. That dilutes the voting strength of the minority black population in those three districts. Have you prepared a plan that does not decrease percentage of minority black population in these three districts? If so, when can the public view them? In fact, that doesn't exist. There is no what's called retrogression, and I will talk about that in the second one. There is no retrogression in this plan. It's designed specifically not to be retrogressive. The second was, what is the retrogressive plan? There's not one. Since the minority black population will decrease in the proposed plan in most of the new districts, will that open the plan to questions by the Department of Justice as a retrogressive plan? Number one, I'll do it backwards, no. Anybody can make comments or have questions about something, but retrogression in its simplest form is this. If you have a district that's a minority majority and suddenly it is not, that is retrogression. Period. That's the simplest way to say it. It does not happen. I did an analysis of every census block in Bojor City. According to the 2020 census, I mapped them. I can show, and y'all have received this, you've got the PDFs that show it, and it just does not exist. In a five-member plan, you're going to have one district that is very strong and one district that supports it. When you try to do a seven-member district, you get one black district and one that is influenced. You cannot build two black districts using any normal formula other than gerrymandering. And we don't do that, that's a bad word. Under the old plan and the new proposed plan, District One, where I live, this is Mr. Jeter, Lee Jeter, who wrote this, has considerably more population than any other district. This dilutes the vote of all of the population of District One, not just minority black population. Why would you leave District One so much larger than the others? What can be done to bring the size of District One closer to the size of the other districts? The growth in Bojor City, with the exception of new subdivisions, which is primarily in the north, is in the south. It's geographically more compact. The other problem with that is, is that you don't have any room to grow unless the city annexes expands. Period. So, when you look at the southernmost district, it is what it is. The only way it can come into sync, if you will, with the others, it's still within plus or minus five percentage points, it is perfectly legal, is to compact it to the south. That only works so far and not enough to make a difference. As long as the entire plan is within a 10% deviation of plus 5% or minus 5% in any, down to a hundredth of a percent, it'll be fine. And that's what we did. Can we see an interactive plan or map that moves the lines for District Three to include all of Sun City and all of Savannah Place in District Three rather than District One? What chance would that make to the overall population and would that make District One and District Three more balanced in size? Okay. I received from your engineering department a GIS, Geographic Information System shaped file of all of your subdivision filings from the beginning. And about 1,200 of these. I reduced those to commonality. So, if it's a specific subdivision, all the filings will then have one common boundary. So that 1,200 has now been reduced to 182 and I'm gonna send it to engineering this afternoon or in the morning. If we put all of Sun City and Savannah Place into District Three, remove them from District One, District One goes down to around minus 15%. Remember that you can't go more than minus 5. All right. If you keep those two neighborhoods together, they adjoin, they're also compact, and they go basically from two sets of census block lines, one of which is the federal highway, the other is Teague Parkway. If you keep them together, you go as far as you can on the east side, Parksdale on the north, the only way to connect those two specific subdivisions, neighborhoods in this case, is to run between the west pavement of Teague Parkway and the river and go north about a mile and a half and then pick up population. And that's gerrymandering in any recognized form. It's a tendril. And on the north end, it would reduce the number of available blocks in which commonly we refer to as Old Bojor, the original town of Bojor. It would then be artificially connected down to three. And that's another reason. It's combining parts of a traditional neighborhood, fragmenting it, and putting it with two much later subdivisions. So, there is only one way to do it and it's really not ethically correct to do it. Were there other plans presented for the five districts other than the one submitted? Shouldn't voters have an opportunity to review those plans and select from those plans options? Well, in building this particular plan, every time an attempt was made by me and it did not work, meaning that it either fractured communities of commonality, people of commonality, I just simply incorporated it into the plan, which became Plan Two, which is perfectly fine. Otherwise, we would have had about 10 what-ifs and none of them would be votable. So, the answer to that is no, this is fine. As far as having maps that you could look at, I created PDF files for everybody's districts and they were given to the clerk. Y'all have seen them, they've been up on the website. So, yes, we've met that. And then the last thing was, did Mr. Joyner prepare other plans, maps for the council to review? The reason that we did it the way I did it was to make sure that we had one that would work before having any what-ifs. And they're all work product anyway, they're not votable plans. So, and I'll provide a written answer to this as well. So, any questions for me?
Here, I appreciate you. I know you put a lot of time in this year to doing that and a lot of work.
Thank you, my pleasure. I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. So we close the public hearing and unfinished business.
Adopted ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached memorandum of understanding between the state of Louisiana, Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, Louisiana Department of Culture, Recreation and Tourism, Boja Parish Police Jury, Caddo Parish Commission, City of Shreveport, and the City of Bojor City in final reading, and that's as amended. That MOU was amended.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, the floor is open for comments of the public. You'll come forward and state your name and address for the record.
William David Jones, 5100 Terra Lane, Bojor City. Mayor councilmembers, great to see all of you again. Since I've been out of office, I've only come here a few times and stuff that I thought was really important, one being liability on the bridge, on the lighting to explain that to you, my views on maybe an attempt to over-service it on buses and today on this bridge matter. Mr. Darby, I'm gonna try to keep this to three minutes. I've asked for a little bitty way if it goes forward, please. But we've tried this a long time, about 25, 30 years to be exact. And the first answer was, you're not gonna have more bridges than they have in Baton Rouge crossing the river. That was the first thing. And after we heard that until that really got so boring, then all of a sudden, it was some kind of barn swallows. Well, all of a sudden, the birds are gone now, so the birds don't matter anymore. So now it's historic, which you had to call a senator's hand and go, no, it's not historic. Jimmy Davis sold his farm and his friend's farm to the state when there was nothing down there and no reason to have a bridge, and that's the history of the bridge. So, that's gone. And then your money was moved, that Mayor Chandler was promised early on, was moved to the I-49 corridor. So whether you get it or not, they don't want you to have the bridge. So now the nu-nu is if you'll just please take our junk, we'll give you what's yours anyway. And if anybody thinks, anybody that stands right here has told you your only responsibility is gonna be a few trash bags, they also need to tell you where to put the corral for the unicorns, 'cause that ain't gonna happen. And you and I both know it. That isn't how it works. No, but they say, take it from us, trust us, and we'll work out whatever you need later. We know how that works too, because it took us five years after we were promised Shreveport-Barksdale interchange. Know all about that one too, we trusted them on that one. So I've got a few questions that I think, I hope are answered somewhere before this thing gets too far down the track. Let's start with security. Nobody's talked about it. You have a responsibility to provide what is assumed to be a secure environment for your citizens. How are you gonna patrol it? Who's gonna patrol it? Is it gonna be one of these four entities, all of them, any of them, none of them? Who knows? Y'all gonna work that out? We know how that goes. Last agreement we had with Shreveport, well, there was two of them. Barksdale Air Show was an agreement, they kinda quit that one. Sports commission, Mr. Williams, who I were at a meeting, what, 15 years ago? 25,000 a year from four entities. Shreveport's not paid one dime in 15 years. So that's how, well, that is kind of a wink and nod things work. They don't work. And the citizens are gonna expect it to be handled and ultimately, you're the only people that are gonna have to step up and do it. So just understand, it's way past trash bags. EMS response, have a heart attack on top of the bridge. Who's gonna respond to it? And what's the response time? Is there gonna be a gate? Is there not gonna be a gate? Is a fireman gonna have to get out and lift a baller? That's another question. Which side of the river responds to that? And what is the real time on that? Because you have an assumed responsibility for safety, okay? Now, let's assume a bunch of bad misguided youth decide that's a good place to get in a fight. Who goes up to bust that thing up? How do you know about it? Same way you'd know about a mugging or raping. I guess you just tell everybody, timeout, go to a call box, call them, say, I'm being raped. Would you come on up here and then go back and get raped? I mean, who, how does anybody know? If it's not patrolled like a street, a neighborhood, there are no neighbors, it's isolated, how does anybody know that somebody's in a bind? You just don't. And, you know, now let's go to upkeep. These are all questions that they're saying, no, we'll get to that later. Okay, let's talk about upkeep. All right, per capita, once again, man, you split stuff across the river, expenses are all split 50/50, taxes are split per capita. You're gonna get more than your fair share of this one because Henry Whitehorne has already said, Shreveport does not have this project in their budget. That statement was made at the port in a public meeting that Shreveport said they were out. They're being spoken for a lot, but they said they were out. Now, when all of a sudden, the people behind this at the state level, you know, governor, a senator, a undersecretary of DOTD, a lieutenant governor, maybe, is behind it, I don't know, these people are gonna be gone before this thing's ever even started. And then maybe about a generation or two from now, somebody's gonna go, what were they thinking? Where do I come up with 15 or 20 million to tear this junk down? This isn't a linear bridge, it's a big old arch that nobody wants and they want you to take it so you can get what's rightfully yours, which is rightfully needed, which is a proper four-lane access across that river. Now, the craziest one's the elevators. I worked at Bojor Parish Community College for 12 years, we had nine elevators. Not one day did all nine work. Some days, five of them worked. And one thing I can tell you about them, they've gotta be inspected. Somebody's gotta sign a contract with an inspection service. And somebody has to sign a contract with somebody that's gonna fix them in a timely manner. And if two of them go down, you're no longer ADA compliant, so then you have to shut down this arched mountain linear park thing, has to be shut down. All these things have to happen and somebody has gotta be responsible and you can't call a meeting with four entities and say, okay, what do we do? None of this has been answered. All right? In closing, I just wanna tell you, there is a lot of questions. And the sad part about it is the state of Louisiana has set the timeline on this bridge for 30 years. For 30 years, they've set the timeline. And now, they're setting the timeline that you gotta do it right now. You need to get your bridge, but you don't need to do it right now. You need to do it under your terms. You need to say, if, okay, if you're gonna take Jimmy Davis back to brand new and give me a brand new four-lane next, a two-lane next to it, then there's my four lanes. I mean, as long as everything's up to new, if they're gonna say it's gonna last forever, good, make it last forever and build a new one right next to it. But there's no reason you have to take this park that's also gonna dip into your existing park and recreation money. So anything you spend on this linear park that's gonna be used by, I'm sure, every bit of handful of people, it's still gonna come out of your ball field and all your other money, it's still coming out of that. And you're not out of liability. You let somebody, if something happens, you're gonna be named. Your attorney will tell you that, everybody can get sued. And if you're responsible for picking up the trash and keeping it clean, which is supposedly all you have to do, yeah. Somebody trip on a water bottle, fall and break their elbow on the concrete, you didn't pick up the trash. The state does not have a police department, they do not have an EMS department. They don't have anything, and they're saying, all you're gonna have to do is pick up a little bit of trash bags. Please slow it down some. I mean, you can go forward in some fashion, but at some point, would somebody please make these questions of record part of the answer before you get so deep in this thing that you can't back out and your friends might already back out on you and you end up with this thing? So please, 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 make those questions of record because I think they're fair ones. And that's all I had, thank you so much.
Mr. Jones, let me ask you something before you take your seat.
Yes, sir.
You once sat here and made decision for the citizens of Bojor. If you were sitting here now on this item, what would be your position?
Mr. Darby, I wouldn't say it's the wrong idea. I would have to prove to myself it's the right idea. And I do not trust the state of Louisiana or anybody other than the people I sat next to to stick to their word. I would have to find out the answers to these things. I would not trust the state to say, just take it and we'll figure that out later. That never works. Just, we'll figure it out later. What you'll figure out is you've got a hold of something you can't let go of. And, you know, what is the rush all of a sudden? They weren't in a rush 30 years ago. Sitting there, yes, I would still pursue my bridge, but you know what? I would darn sure make sure it was under my terms, not, you're gonna take our garbage. I mean, this sets a whole new precedent for the state and every parish. If you want your state money for your state stuff, you gotta take our throwaways first. This sets a precedent. I have never seen anything like this and I can tell you what, I've done a little bit of homework on a linear bridge. This is not a linear park. Linear parks are flat, abandoned, metro places that go through the middle of New York and they use them in the green spaces to walk between places they work, eat, and live. This, this is a mountain. If you wanna see how many people cross a bridge, go find out how many walk across Texas Street Bridge. It goes from downtown Shreveport to boardwalk. I have never seen more than maybe in my lifetime, maybe five people, walk across that bridge. And I went to the fireworks last night, I looked up there, I didn't see anybody walk across it. I wouldn't, I would not give up the pursuit of that bridge though. I would not do that. I would not do that, but at some point, you can't be held hostage. I mean, you know what? Your souls are worth more than thirty pieces of silver, gentlemen. Just, I would slow it down, and I would just say, these, this is what's in front of us. And you can go forward today at your attorney's advice on how you can go forward carefully, but everything I just named are legitimate questions that I really think you need answers for yourself before you get any deeper. And that's, you know, that's, y'all, y'all sit in the hard seats, not me. And, uh, you know, but that, um, I do not, I do want it on the record that I absolutely think the bridge is a necessity. But the, the state's playing you, and I think they're playing you. They're not happy with me right now, because I can tell you, Red River's, they're, anybody in a bowl's care about it, really. I mean, you know, I, sooner or later, sooner or later, those questions are gonna have to be answered. And the, the, the most important ones, I think, and you've, you've got chiefs here. The most important ones are, are the, um, perceived security. You, it can't just be perceived. You gotta figure out what you're gonna do with that. Um, somebody said the other day that was arguing, not arguing, discussing it with me, said, you know, well, what about on the walkway on Arthur A.T. I said, you know, I can break and run from that. Somebody gets after me, I can run from that walkway, run out in the middle of the road and wave my arms. I am not jumping off the side of that bridge if somebody gets off of me. You kinda hemmed up there. And, um, it, um, the security part really needs to be talked about, and you need to talk with your chiefs about that. And they, they work, and the mayor knew, they work for him, and I, I think it's legitimate concerns, because the public perceives that you provide them safety. And that question's gotta be answered. So thank y'all so much for your time, and I wish you luck in, on this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your insight. Uh, anyone else would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Darby?
Yes, sir.
You know, last week, if you remember, I kept saying, well, I kept hearing from one of the speakers, we gotta get this trash thing signed, gotta get it signed. And, and so you're telling me that the trash is more important than some of the issues that I brought up, you know? Are we buying roads? Are we, you know, building other buildings down there that the state's gonna take or whatever, you know? And, uh, there's no way the trash, picking up trash can be more important than getting the answers I had, the questions I had, and the questions Mr. Jones had. I mean, I think we oughta, in my opinion, get administration to this, draw up questions, send them down to Lieutenant Governor. You know, cuz the way it's, the way it's written now, you know, I, I'm not voting for it today, but because it, it's not that important. The trash is not that important right now. Other things are more important in my eyes. I don't wanna, again, people, uh, when we're gone, and the people behind us, uh, put them at, in a bad situation. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so for clarity, but if this passes, and I guess this question is for the city attorney, if this passes, we're not in any type of binding relationship with the state or DOTD. This just keeps the talks moving forward.
Essentially, what you have in front of you is a document, uh, to, uh, an agreement to agree upon something later. Um, without going through every provision of it, it is a, it is an understanding that if and when the state of Louisiana takes this into the state park system, then, uh, uh, the city of Bossier, Bossier Parish, the city of Shreveport, and Caddo Parish would provide certain minimal services. However, this, it, it's called a memorandum of understanding, which is basically something to, you know, an agreement to agree to enter into some sort of joint cooperative endeavor agreement, um, down the road, uh, you know, after the park is constructed. Then after, the, the process would be that once the park is constructed, um, then it is turned over in, uh, supposedly, or, uh, taken into the state park system. The state park system will provide certain basic services, and there would be some sort of binding contract or agreement in the future for the city of Bossier to perform certain minimal services like trash pickup and, um, maintenance and things of this nature. So this, this document in and of itself is, doesn't bind anybody contractually to, um, to, to, to certain obligations.
And that's my, yeah, and, and, uh, I, I appreciate every time I get to speak with Mr. Jones, cuz he always gives me a perspective that maybe I'm missing. And so, and, and I have to say, I do agree with him on the safety aspect, that before we sign anything long-term, uh, that is something that we need to have a discussion about. Um, I'm in, I'm in favor of moving this forward to keep, cuz I, I do think a, a bridge is, is, is necessary. Uh, but, uh, I will, I will side with Mr. Jones in saying that nothing needs to be signed in, in stone uh, until we have some of these clear, uh, these answers cleared up. So that's all I have.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, you know, we're still five or six years away from even having a bridge.
Right.
But we're set on signing something that says we're gonna pick up trash. Now, does that make any sense to anybody? I mean, it really doesn't mean, you know, it's, it's just more things that's important that we should be able to get answers to than picking up trash, you know?
Got a question, Mr. President. Have, has, um, the, the mayor of Shreveport, um, Dr. Wilson with Caddo Parish, and Tom Sauls, the president of, have they all signed this already?
My understanding is that they have.
They have? And I mean, then we got two other big signatures that are the big key to this, which is Lieutenant Governor Nungasser and then Dr. Wilson. You know, once we all sign this, it'll go down there to them. And, um, you know, in, in the MOU, you know, we, we've got stuff, you know, stuff that they have to do that I agree with the elevators. I, I don't see how the elevators will ever work, um, on that bridge. That they're gonna paint it, they're gonna redeck it, they're gonna spend thirty, forty million dollars doing all this stuff to the, to the bridge. Um, you know, I, I am one that, you know, yeah, I haven't been here as long as Mr. Jones I do, knowing, um, you know, we've been fighting for it for twenty years, just myself, um, down there in South Bossier. Um, I, 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 I think we need to move forward, but I, I think there are still a lot of unanswered questions to this that, um, we, we may get the right answers and we may not one day. Um, that's just the, unfortunately, the way the state of Louisiana works. But, um, I do agree that before we go into any long-term, which will probably be five years down the road, um, agreement, that there are some hard questions that need to be, um, in writing.
Thank you. Any other council member would like to come in on this item? Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Hammond, and second, Mr. Smith. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance appropriating the sum of ninety thousand dollars from the EMS capital contingency fund for the purchase of EMS supplies for the new fire station in the East Bank District and at the central station. Final reading?
So moved.
Discussion, council, or debate?
Do, do we know when the, the station's gonna be open? We, we have an update on that, chief?
Come on, wait up here, Brian.
Last we heard, mid-August. But then, you know, it'll take us a while. We had a few things come up. Power lines, uh, they put up when they expanded Coleman Street are higher than we thought. So we gotta put a tower up, uh, to get our communications to the parking garage, from the parking garage to City Hall. So there's some things that came up, but last I heard, mid-August, so.
Any other discussion, council? The floor is open for comments from the public on this item number two. Have a motion, Mr. Free, I think, and, uh, second, Mr. Maggio?
I had Mr. Hammond and Mr. Maggio.
Mr. Hammond, be, okay, let Mr. Hammond, and then Mr. Maggio. Uh, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance approving the reapportionment of council districts for the city of Bossier City according to map two of twenty-two. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, council, debate? The floor is open for comments. Motion, uh, Mr. Smith, second, Mr. Williams. Council, please cast your vote.
New business.
Yes.
Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Brandon Lee, four-wheel solution. Location of certain tract of land being point eight-eight-three acres, more or less located at eighteen fifteen, eighteen seventeen, eighteen nineteen, and eighteen twenty-five, Airline Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request zoning amendment to change the zoning classification from B-two limited business to B-three general business for a used auto sales.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, uh, Mr. Williams, second. And Mr. Smith, uh, council, discussion or debate?
Yeah, we're, we're exec, I'm pulling it up, is it? Is it, is it the building, call out of the, that, that they're existing in right now?
Correct.
Okay.
And the building south of there, they acquired the southern building that was a little strip center. They've acquired that and had to rezone that as well.
Okay. Are there, they're gonna be, I mean, I know a lot of the, they're gonna be, I mean, strict veneer and everything like that for?
If they should, if they change it substantially, they'll have to come up to the architectural standards. But if they don't do anything, we won't require them to bring it up to standard.
Thank you. Any additional discussion, council? The floor is open for comments. No comments. Council, uh, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Zap Ty, location thirty-two forty-four, Barkstall Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant.
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Smith, and a second, Mr. Maggio. Any discussion or debate, council? The floor is open for comments of the public. No comments. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to declare the completion of the City Hall parking lot expansion project at a total construction cost of three hundred eighteen thousand, fifty dollars and twenty-seven cents, including change order number one in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand, eight hundred five, five dollars and twenty-seven cents, and to amend ordinance seventy-seven of twenty-twenty-one, leaving a surplus of funding for its balance. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, the second, Mr. Williams. Discussion or debate? The floor is open for comments. No comments. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Public hearing concerning the city of Bossier City's twenty-twenty-two CDBG Annual Action Plan for Application for Community Development Block Grant Funds.
The chair opened the public hearing.
Good afternoon, council. This is the same thing I, I come back to you quite often with. You've seen this one before. We saw a preliminary of it in November, but the Congress just appropriated the money not too long ago, and HUD divided it up, and we just found out how much we were gonna get. So we, we have the, the final copy over there. I have a copy of the, the bones of it right there, which is the, uh, budget showing what we were putting money into. Um, as y'all know, we're an entitlement community, so we don't have to compete for the money. We just get what Congress appropriates, and it's divided up by formulae in the law, and it comes to us. Um, the reason we ran back through the public hearing, uh, is that we had a, one sub-recipient that was left off when we ran it through before, and that's, uh, was basic necessities, which is the last one on there besides the micro-business. Other than that, what you have there is the, uh, the project this time, which is what we're gonna do with the money for twenty-twenty-two. I know it's kinda late in the year, but that's, things have been slowed down by Congress. You'd like for me to go through the projects or anything? I don't know if you wanna take the time to do that.
I think everyone has a copy of your summation, so we can forego that. Uh, this is a public hearing. If there's someone who would like to come in on this item, um, feel free to come forward. We close the public hearing. Next item?
Adopt a resolution supporting the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under entitlement status, under authority of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four. First and final reading.
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Smith. The floor is open for comments. No comments. Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, did yours come up?
Sorry.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Smith, second, Mr. Maggio. Uh, discussion or debate, council? The floor is open for comments. No comments. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to promote from within a traffic control lead technician and to backfill any position this, this creates in the traffic engineering division. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion made by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion? The floor is open for comments. No comments. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing the city of Bossier City to settle pending lawsuit, City of Bossier City versus Nichols Loop Center at Owl. First reading.
So moved. Any discussion, council?
Yeah, I, I do. Um, I, I, I know this has been going on, previous administration and inherited over. Um, I just, you, you know, I, I don't, I don't have hardly any information on this, um, about this lawsuit. I'm just, where, where did this, where did this amount, where did this number come from?
I would suggest if we're gonna discuss litigation, um, Mr. Jacobs, that we go into executive session. Phyllis, I don't know if we can do that now, or if we have to have a special meeting, but I feel as though those negotiations and so forth should be privy to the council seeing as it was, um, litigation. I mean, that's what my past tells me, so.
I think that we would have to call a special meeting. I don't think that it would be proper to amend the agenda to go into an executive session. Um, if, uh, or, Mr. Hammond, I'll be happy to answer your, any questions that you have after the meeting.
Um, one thing I can assure you, Mr. Hammond-
Um, one thing I can assure you, Mr. Hammond, that, um, Mr. Jacobs and I have had, been a part of, uh, multiple meetings, phone calls, and, um, Mr. Williams and Mr. Darby and, uh, Mr. Free, I've, I've been involved in previous settlements, um, which I'm not gonna mention specific names and feel as though that at the end of the day, you'll be proud of the outcome at the end of the day, so. And I'm happy to sit and explain that process as well.
All right.
I, I do, I have one question that I think might could be answered, is where is the money coming from? Are we, is it coming out of the Walter or Bigby Carriage Way find?
Correct. Property acquisition.
Mr. Hammond, are you satisfied with the response or do you need additional?
Well, I mean, I, I, yeah, I mean, I understand we can't, we can't go into, the, the questions that I'm, that I'm asking, um, we, we can't go into those, so, um, yeah, it'll appease me for now.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. And Mr. Smith?
Fine.
You're fine. Okay, any other comments from the council? The floor is open for input comments of citizens. Council, please cast your vote. And council, that's the last item on this agenda. Announcements?
Motion carries.
Oh, okay. Announcements? And Mr. Mayor, any comments?
Most of the night today, just want everybody to stay cool, it's a hot out there and, and, everybody have, stay healthy.
This meeting is adjourned.